I don't know why that's doing that.
You know what, it's Sheila.
I don't know what "follow" is.
I don't get what...
And that's like violence.
I'm like, I don't know what "follow" means.
That's like violence.
Yeah.
Close the door.
This will leave a one and we're going to just follow the agenda. Is this show going to cancel?
Somebody has not answered. What about phones on?
We are, you know, checking. I was there. I was there in college. And for them. Okay. You want to use the phone? You can have the cash or stuff this year. Or that's just... Maybe it's somebody on my phone. You know, from house and the other. They're all muted.
We got a device and I'm going to show them off. Are we going to start to know? You question me? You know, on your phone. If we don't have the device, we'll call them up. You know, you... Oh, no, don't be dumb.
That's very much you.
Okay. So, John, your first question, do we hear?
For which it stands, one nation, under God, and with his love, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and mute yourself and see if I have something on.
Olivia Funtaro?
Yeah.
Vito Campanelli?
There.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Jan and Johnson?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here, we'll call to order at seven twenty here. Two of the annual budgets for fiscal year 2020, 2021. At this time, we call on business managers back to us to reveal any budget change.
Good evening. During this time, I will provide a brief overview of the 2021 budget that was presented in July.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Overall, we budgeted on the conservative side. What this means is we budgeted cautiously due to the unknowns. Most of the grants were kept flat, which means we kept the grant same as received in 2020. We do not anticipate revenue for some of the local accounts, for example, sports, athletic fees, and summer camp. Next, the budget reflects a 3% increase for teachers according to their contract. We also added a 2.75% increase for aides. The budget reflects a 5% increase in benefits, a 3% increase in transportation, a 3% increase in food service, and tuition had the 5% increase. Also, we added funds for Kynect, our outsource technology company. Next, I would like to inform you of changes that were made after the board meeting in July. The budget reflects an increase for current custodial staff. Next, we received notice from the Illinois Department of Revenue that there will be a 17.4% decrease from fiscal year 2020 personal property replacement taxes. The budget has been modified to reflect the decrease in tax revenue. Next, IMRF was modified to reflect the 2020 actuals, which means the money that we received. Next, the budget was changed to reflect the board's decision in July regarding staffing, eliminating positions and authorizing paraprofessional aides reduction in force. With these changes, we introduce a balanced budget for the 2021 fiscal year. We were able to introduce a balanced budget by budgeting carefully. We performed a line-by-line analysis of the budget. We streamlined staffing to manage costs. We restructured where some staff has taken on additional duties. We renegotiated contracts to cut costs and apply for several grants. The ESSER grant is approximately $507,000. We're going to receive additional $14,000 for early childhood. And today, I applied for a technology-related grant in the amount of $158,000. And with this grant, we're going to order 288 additional Chromebooks and 250 mobile hotspots, so students will be able to access internet from their homes. Finally, after board approval, the budget will be uploaded to ISB, delivered to the township treasurer's office, and submitted to West 40. With that said, we recommend the board pass the balanced budget for 2021 fiscal year. Are there any questions?
I thought some time for public hearing. Should we ask them for questions from the board now?
We ask them for, if the board has any questions, then we'll go into public comment.
Yeah, I have, I have questions. It's Marge Sheila.
Hi, Marge.
So, so Doug, as far as the budget is concerned, I, I heard that you put in for raises for the, the aides. Are there, is there money earmarked for raises for our school secretaries?
No, I do not have any money earmarked for the school secretaries for this budget.
Okay, and, and you said it's a balanced budget. Were there, were there a lot of changes from what was posted, um, public view? And then, then the, the, the second part of that question is, did COVID restrictions have any effect? And I know we don't get hundreds of people coming in. We probably didn't have any. But were there any restrictions due to COVID where people could not come into the ad building to view the budget?
No, the budget was on public display and, uh, community members had every opportunity to come in to view the budget.
Yeah, I just thought that because of COVID, there might have been something. And then, um, are there any changes on the budget due to, um, extra COVID expenses? I know we've heard about PPE that was, that was, um, ordered. And now we had a company come in and do, you know, um, cleaning and sanitizing. So was the bus, was the budget adjusted to, um, um, cover those costs or are they in there somewhere?
Yes.
Those are the questions that I have.
So, do you have a public comment for?
Okay, so. Um, for anyone joining the meeting via telephone, you will automatically appear on our list of meeting attendees. During comments, the meeting moderator will call out the last two digits of your phone number in the order they appear in the meeting. At that time, if you wish, when the last two digits of your number are called, you will be able to make a comment. Please press star six to unmute yourself. If you don't say anything when your number is called, we will wait five seconds before continuing on to the next number. Anyone wishing to make a comment will have, um, three minutes to speak. You will be alerted that your time is up and you will be returned to a muted state. Anyone joining this meeting must remain muted outside of their designated speaking time. For anyone using Google Meet, please check the chat box for the moderator's instructions on making public comments. And I do have one written public comment that I will read first. Um, this is from Joanne Schaefer, taxpayer. Good evening. How can you possibly have a budget meeting to have public input when constituents, or constituents? Thank you. Are not allowed to attend in person. You are stifling public comments. How is the public supposed to get intelligent questions or any type of questions? And that is all I have. Uh, Pat?
Okay, I will read off numbers starting with the area code and the last two digits of your phone number. At that time, if you wish to make a comment, unmute yourself and you will have your three minutes. If you say nothing after five seconds, I will move on to the next number. We will start with area code 312, ending in 34. Next will be area code 612, ending in 29. Next will be area code 708, ending in 03. Next will be area code 708, ending in 13. Next will be area code 708, ending in 21. Next will be area code 708, ending in 30. I see that 30 unmuted. Did you have a comment?
Hello, can you hear me now? Hello?
Hi, Mr. Wyner, we hear you.
Okay, yeah. Now, is this public comment just for the budget or can we adjust any, anything?
It's budget.
What's that?
For the budget. And then if you want to... For the budget, right. And you're in the regular meeting if you want to.
Okay, I can, my comments can wait for the regular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next number will be 708, ending in 32. Next will be area code 708, ending in 49. Next will be area code 708, ending in 53. Next will be area code 708, ending in 66. Next will be area code 708, ending in 69. Finally, area code 708, ending in 73.
Hello?
Hello.
Uh, can you hear me? This is Mrs. Medina.
I, I'm sorry, can you say your name one more time?
Gloria Medina.
Thank you, hi Gloria.
Hi, thank you for meeting tonight. Um, I know it's an extra sacrifice to be out there. Um, a question is about the budget. Uh, since the budget was made and we don't, uh, know information about if the superintendent, uh, is still going to be there. We don't have information based on, uh, you know, if he, uh, realized he made his goal. Uh, so is that included in the budget? Because it should not, because it, as public, we should know, uh, did he meet those criteria?
Yes.
And if he did not, what, we should not have the, um, the, in there because, uh, we don't know. As parents, as community, taxpayers. And so that's a concern and also with the transportation. Okay, we have COVID. Uh, how do you know when COVID is going to end? We don't even have a vaccine yet. And also, a question. Uh, the teachers are in the building, so they are getting paid. Are they in the building? Or I don't know if that pertains to another meeting.
Yes, it does. Um, if you want to go back to the regular meeting, because...
Okay.
Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And there were no volunteers from Google participants. Uh, would be all callers.
Please confirm motion to adjourn the public hearing at seven forty-nine.
I will make the motion.
Fred Rodriguez? Shannon Johnson?
I am careful with the motion.
Yes, okay. Vito made it and Olivia, seconded. Um, Marjorie Bussack?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Funtaro?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
And George Torres?
Yes.
Pat?
I'm going to call you, uh, one, whether these orders at seven forty-nine. Uh, please join me for a quick little moment.
One nation, two republics, and justice for all. And to the republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with his love, with liberty and justice for all.
Olivia Funtaro?
Yeah.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
Marjorie Bussack?
Here.
Yes. George Torres? Yes.
We didn't know up to anything until we have a public session started in the morning, that public agenda.
No.
Okay, moving on with public comments.
George, before we, we asked that, there's no, there's no place for superintendent, um, report. I, I just had three questions to ask you, Chris. Um, first of all, um, how, how is the student attendance going?
I could have that point.
Okay. Um, and then, um...
Did you expect me to have a...
Well, I, I, no, no, no. What I was expecting was it's going pretty good. We have high attendance.
I mean, if you, if you asked me a specific question, I don't have the exact answer. But if you're asking me in the general sense, there, you know, with the bandwidth we're working on, there has been some drop off.
Right, right.
And coming out, but, but for the most part, it is going good. Uh, I didn't know if you were looking for any...
No, I'm not looking for specific numbers. If you want to share that with the board sometime, I was just trying to get a feel about...
Mostly, the issues are surrounding sometimes a drop off.
Yes.
Or sustaining toward the end of the day.
Right.
Uh, again, it's...
I was more concerned about, you know, if you have a feel about kids who just weren't attending. The numbers aren't going to be what the numbers are.
No, no, we, 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 we pick up some and those are ending up either in, in phone calls, uh, home checks. I know Jan's doing home checks, if that pops up. But, you know, those are...
Okay.
Principals are working very hard to make sure that, that they're attending.
Okay, good. The other, the other, the second question I had was, do we have, and I'm not looking for specific numbers, the numbers. Do we have, um, some staff or, uh, you know, a good amount of staff, a little bit of staff that are working from home?
We do have some that, that are working from home, uh, in the teacher ranks. We did include that as a memorandum of understanding. It has a process to do it. And, and it's by nature going to happen because, uh, as I said a little while back, one of the things is, if you're showing any of the ten symptoms, you have to self-quarantine for 10 days. So with teachers, one aspect of that is we need them to work from home because otherwise we have a huge shortage.
Right.
But yes, we do have a group that is either, um, working from home due to self-quarantine.
Right.
And there's been some other exceptions, uh, worked out with...
But it's, but it's only teachers?
At this point, yes, we did have, uh, a dynamic where there was a small amount of aides, but we're looking at that because there was no MOU. So we're going to look at those dynamics and make sure it's consistent with what, what we ought to be doing. I've been working with Felicia on that.
Okay. And, and just as far as aides, you would, you would be okay? I mean, I was just trying to, uh, teachers who work from home, I get that, but I'm just kind of wondering if, if we're allowing aides to be, what, what they're doing.
That's exactly what you're worrying them in, correct.
And the last, the last thing I had, I know a couple meetings back, when we were going to go high ground and now we're, we're remote, um, you talked about, um, revisiting this for the second quarter and that's going to be, I mean, it's, it's going to be here before you even know about it. So I'm not looking for a specific answer, only if, if, if there are going to be discussions on that. And then the, the thing I keep hearing on, on TV now, um, is ventilation. And so I was wondering if, when, when you go to consider of what, whether we remain remote or not, um, are we checking into the ventilation? I know that the previous, um, director was, they were doing some things over at home school. I know the fan or whatever was. And I think about that school not being, their windows, you know, because of, of the, related to soundproofing, the windows don't open and there are classrooms like this. And so I know we have the, the, um, oh, I forgot what they're called, Unibet? Unibet. And, um, so I know that brings fresh air in. And I'm just wondering, when we go to look at that, will you also be considering what we have to do to maintain good ventilation for our students and teachers when they're back?
Okay, we, we've done that already.
You've done it already.
Yeah, we've done that now with the wrong talking book with the discussion with the teachers.
Okay.
Before they return. So we did do that, we did off grade. Um, I didn't give you the exact model.
That's right, but you did.
Yeah, there's enough grades beyond what we currently have.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, well, there was public comment.
Okay. Good evening. For anyone joining the meeting, you guys have a telephone. You will automatically appear on our list of meeting attendees during public comments. The meeting moderator will call out the last two digits of your phone number in the order they appear in the meeting. At that time, if you wish, when the last two digits of your number is called, you will be able to make a public comment. Please press star six to unmute yourself. If you don't say anything when your number is called, we will wait five seconds before continuing on to the next number. Anyone joining this meeting must remain unmuted outside of their designated speaking time. For anyone using Google Meet, please check the chat box for the moderator's instructions on making the public comment. And I do have one public comment that was, um, someone had emailed, Joanne Schaefer, taxpayer. Good evening. I am so tired of nicely bringing to the Board of Education the fact that meetings are closed to the public. I am now sick of it. How much, how much longer are you, the board, going to hide in the windowless room with no public attendance? I understand you do not want face public comments, but enough is enough. Grow up, put your big boy caps on and come out of hiding. Six months is enough. If we can have students daily in attendance at the ad building, we can have open meetings, open public meetings. While we, while we can phone in, we cannot either hear you as board members if and when you speak. And if we do not make out some comments, we cannot tell who is speaking because no one identifies themselves. Yes, we know Marge, Sharon and Shannon's voices, but the rest we're just guessing. Your unintelligible meetings are demeaning to the district and insulting to the constituents. We cannot understand our 103 business meetings and that is wrong. Please open meetings by holding them in the GW Cafe with adequate microphones and social distance. And that is all I have. Pat?
Uh, we have one Google volunteer that we're open up with this time, Tony Jackman.
Good evening. I'm Tony Jackman, seventh grade science teacher at GW and Teachers Union President. Teachers are currently working harder than any teachers ever have, doing things that no one in education has ever done before to meet the needs of District 103 students despite the lack of clear support and communication from District Administration. We are going above and beyond to find creative and innovative ways to use technology and resources to make this new way of learning engaging. This includes in many cases, our, using our own money to purchase supplemental materials, constantly learning new programs and using our technology, like our own technology, like our own computers, iPads and cell phones, because our desktop computers don't have cameras and Chromebooks are not conducive to being able to see and interact with as many as 34 students in a Google Meet, so that we can be able to navigate the complex online experience we're trying to give students. You're holding your meeting next door to my classroom, room 131. Please stop by and see my desk set up. Every day I have my desktop, my laptop, my phone, all set up at the same time and I'm navigating between answering student and parent emails, teaching a lesson on Google Meet while some students pop in and out due to their Wi-Fi issues or computer issues, or I pop in and out, or I lag between, uh, while trying to load the next lesson due to district Wi-Fi issues. And at the same time, I'm emailing parents about concerns for students. Every day is an exhausting struggle. Every teacher has a similar story to tell about their day and some of the elementary schools have much bigger district Wi-Fi struggles than we do at GW. I don't know a single teacher who isn't working seven days a week to make sure that they're ready and able to be there for their students. We're doing all this with very little acknowledgement from the District Administration or the School Board of our hard work and dedication. I say all this not to complain, but to say it would go a long way with teachers to hear some regular sincere acknowledgement for the work we are doing in an unprecedented time. And as we move forward in this horrible, and this horrible pandemic continues to wreak havoc on the District 103 community, it's our hope that the School Board will, will continue to make decisions that will keep students and staff safe. Thank you.
And next, we will go through the phone numbers again, starting with area code and ending with the last two digits of the phone number. When you are called, you will have five seconds to unmute yourself and speak up, or I will move on to the next number. We will begin with area code 312, ending in 34. Next, we will be going with area code 612, ending in 29. Next will be area code 708, ending in 03. Next will be area code 708, ending in 11. Next will be area code 708, ending in 13. Next will be area code 708, ending in 21. Next will be area code 708, ending in 30. Next will be area code 708, ending in 32.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, Tom Wyner, parent of a third grader. A couple, few questions actually. We have two people resigning their post in District 103. One is, was the special ed, ed, ed leader or person, I'm sorry, I forgot, I got the title mixed up. She was hired without, without all the qualifications, with the provision that she go get the certification and the district will reimburse her. Now that she's leaving, will the district go after her and try to get our, the district's money back and put it back into, into the fund for sort of students and teachers can, you can get what they need? Also, with the HR person quitting and, or resigning, whatever you want to call it, and leaving, will they still be entitled to their vacation days that they have not occurred yet? And also, we're, with this, okay, we're all crazy with this COVID thing. What is the district plan, if, if there's any plans to open at the second quarter or is it going to be pushed off until after the holidays? So if someone can, you know, answer those questions sometime soon, that will be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be area code 708, ending in 46. Next will be area code 708, ending in 49. Next will be area code 708, ending in 53. Next will be area code 708, ending in 66. Next will be area code 708, ending in 69. And finally, we will have area code 708, ending in 73.
Hello?
Hello? Okay, uh, this is Gloria Medina. Hi. Okay, uh, first of all, um, I know I have a short period of time, but, uh, you know, since it's a virtual thing, uh, it's just, it's really hard, okay? Um, I would like to commend all District 103, uh, personnel, especially the teachers. Uh, my student is doing a great job. He's independent. He is working under his Chromebook and excellent, independent. Uh, the instruction from his teacher is 100%. They're working a hu- 100, 200%, okay? Please, I commend the teachers, okay? Uh, Chromebook, Chromebooks, uh, just so you know, they don't work at the library. Okay, I don't know if you know about this, but when we go to the library, if we have a Wi-Fi problem, Chromebooks do not work. So if you can, please look into that. Uh, this goes to Mr. Rivera. Uh, a little respect to all board members would be appreciated, because according to what I just heard a little while ago, uh, when somebody is asking a question, do not take it as a personal attack, okay? Because you sound really ba- bad, Mr. Rivera. Okay, you sound very unprofessional, okay? We're dealing with the pandemic. Don't, let's be civil, please, okay? The, you know, the board members there, it's, uh, you know, they, they deserve this respect, please. You work, you work for us. Can we please, uh, get certified personnel only? I, I got no robocalls. I, we as, I plead to you as a parent, to give us a choice if there's a time where you're going to think about toward the future, because this is saving, uh, our kids. We don't have a vaccine, and we're gonna need these teachers to be healthy if we ever go back, okay? So you need to think about that, like, uh, Mr. Rivera was saying, uh, you can't afford for the si- the teachers to get sick. We can't afford one life to be lost around here, okay? But it's important, because the teachers, who's going to teach? So leave them at home, okay? Our, uh, you know, going back to the, uh, personnel only, our kids need to get the certified personnel that we need. Our kids don't deserve second quality personnel. And when, when can the public meeting be virtual? Cause, uh, for all I know, I only hear Shannon and Marge and, uh, Mr. Rivera and, and, and Torres. Uh, I need to see virtual, okay? I need to know that your bodies are there, because I don't hear no, no Quintero, no Rodriguez, uh, uh, and why Felicia there? Like, why, why must we be paying for a lawyer every single meeting? That's a lot of money for us, okay? Right now, a lot of people don't have jobs, okay? You need to understand that. Board members, information is not clear. You jumble and mumble and do this on purpose. You, you understand, e- especially at the board meeting, Mr. President Torres and Mr. Rivera, you whisper, you do not, uh, I can understand you, you're not talking clear. And I want to remind, I want to remind you, this is a public meeting. It is a violation, because you're not understandable, we can't comprehend anything. It's a meeting that doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
Amen.
If somebody can get to me, please, respond to me, somebody. Thank you.
Moving on with, uh, year-to-date financials. The financials are attached to the agenda for the public. Moving on, consent agenda. I'm looking for motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of support personnel over the ASBDA, AISA, homeschool at $15 an hour, um, adult 92320, and Sylvia Vermiss, parent AISA Edison, $15 an hour, adult 92320. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to remove the bill list from the consent agenda. I have some questions.
Did you, did I tag it? Have you, I, I didn't hear the name.
Yeah, I didn't.
What was that again? The first name that you're adding, that name that you're adding for the parent AISA?
Over the years?
Over, no, over.
Over the years.
O, 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 V, A, D, A, V, and that's at home. And that's at home, $15 an hour. And then the other one?
Sylvia Vermiss, V, R, N, D, R.
And that was at Edison. Thank you. For the same, same part, parent AISA, so, $15 an hour.
Are you moving, are you moving B1 and 2, or is it, like, B1? I just wanted to mention.
Oh, B, B1, board bill.
Um, before we vote on this, so we need to, we need to get a motion and a second.
I made a motion, no one's saying.
So we go with the first and I'll second it.
And this was with removing it from, with Marge moving the bill list, B1. I don't know if everyone heard.
You want?
Yeah, if you wanted to discuss something else, we should just remove it.
I just have a question. I just wanted to reiterate, Chris, I would like an answer in regards, um, to Kelly, to attend about us paying for her, um.
I can answer that now, of course. That's all.
I don't know if that was personnel and that sort of said out loud.
No, but it's just, you know, I mean, you, like, I have to consider this, and, you know, you have to, but even if you're asking a question, you're answering it. It, it was part of the contract, so there, there is no violation of anything if the contract was fulfilled.
He had a one-year contract.
Okay.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
Marge Divisat?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Pintaro?
Yes.
And George Cora?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree. Mm-hmm. The, the questions that I had about, um, the bill list is that we have another, another $10,000 plus payment to account temp. So, uh, my, my question about that is, um, the, um, whatever the term was used, uh, administration reorganization, we got rid of the accounts payable person. Um, I believe, my opinion, there's no way a business manager can handle her job and do accounts payable, working with the vendors and everything. So my, my question is, are we going to, I, I, and I don't see how you can move accounts payable around and split it up between the people working at the ad building. I really can't. So is your intention to keep hiring an account temp for every month? Or are you eventually looking to hire a person to work in the business office to take this over? Because at $10,000 a month, that's a lot of money after 12 months.
Right, and what we're looking at is, is what we're going to do, because as we made these, you know, we made several changes, and this was one that, that appeared that we, we couldn't balance in that frame. So that is, that is something that I was meeting with, uh, Dr. Johnson earlier this, and last, last week, actually, trying to discuss where, if we have any other options, and, and it looks like we may need to try to bring that to the board for a recreation of a position.
I, I, I just, for some reason, I think we should have looked into that before we let people go. The, the others, the next thing I have is, is Kelly Services. So those are subs, $24,000. Have we got that many expenses? Are these, like, long-term positions of, of, of teachers that are not, not able to come back? It just seems like a, a lot of money for subs. And then, uh, aside of that, are they given training? Uh, I mean, we heard, we heard Mrs. Jackman speak and, and talking with other teachers, it's, it's a pretty big learning curve to now be teaching virtually. And, um, uh, we bring in somebody, you know, from Kelly, from Kelly, we're spending like almost $25,000 this month. How are they able to handle that?
And, and right now, uh, they basically, you know, what, what Tony said is correct. They are working very hard, and, and a lot of the, um, issues right now because of the training and the COVID impact is a pool of stuff. I mean, there, there's several who said, with COVID going on, we're not going to sub right now. But, but Tony, that's exactly correct, that the teachers are stepping up. And what, um, there are several subs who are in place who are, you know, long-term subs, but I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head. I just look at those and see exactly how many of them are long-term, but I know, look at that dependence plus daily, there are several that are long-term, and that's probably a volatile thing. Um, but, but I, I could get more precise information, but on, on that note, I mean, uh, you know, just, I mean, basically, speaking back on what was, uh, with Jackman, that they do help a lot with, as teachers, current staff, with internal subbing and picking up with kids, with subs who are not trained well enough, but we are working with Kelly to enhance that training and try and do better.
Yeah, that was my concern. The teachers get sick, and I, I can see, you know, but this is a, a, really a burden on them, and so I was just, I just wanted to, to, to be assured that we're giving our kids the best possible, possibly trained, uh, subs to take the place of a teacher when she's not there. And then, um, I had a question about Maxim. That bill's almost $2,000, and underneath it says Lincoln Health Services. So what is that? What, why do we have a Maxim person over at Lincoln? I thought he hired the nurse for every building.
We do, we, we have that in place. Now I'll have to look into that detail and.
Could you let me know? I think that's, you know, again, it's, it's $2,000, but I didn't, there are no kids in school, so it wouldn't be like we had to have a nurse there.
You know what, actually, I think we could be, or, you know, let me, let me make sure. But I think I have an idea on that, so I'll, I'll make sure.
All right. Um, the other thing is Q&amp;S. Now, I know that $24,700 is a monthly payment to them, but then I noticed that we also purchased a, um, a hard drive and a power cord, and I guess, I'm just not clear. So when we hired this company, so anytime we have to buy equipment like a power cord, we, we can only, we only buy, we have to buy that all through Q&amp;S, is that it?
I'd have to look at the contract, but there are certain things that we work through without the, yeah.
Okay. I, I would just like to know, I mean, you know, and maybe it's the price, maybe it isn't, but I didn't realize. I know we had to pay them every month, but, um, I just, I didn't realize that that was, that was the other questions I had. So if we need a motion, I would move to approve the bill list, unless somebody else is, of course.
Do I have, do I have a motion? You know, before you read that, will I have a motion?
So Marge made the motion.
Okay.
You want a second?
Sure.
Okay. Winifred Rodriguez? Yes. Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
Marge Divisat?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Pintaro?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
George Cora?
Yes.
Moving on to board. Action item, action item A, for a motion for the annual budget for this year 2020, 2021. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the, uh, budget.
First, can you please just speak up a little bit, even just for me? I think I have a very hard time hearing.
But I'm looking for a motion to adopt the, I mean, annual budget for 2020, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
So a second? I will second. Comment?
I, I have a comment. I asked a question of Dr. Johnson, um, about raises for, for secretaries. I know we're going to be passing the, the contract for A. Our secretaries do, they are the backbone of the school. They have worked very hard. They didn't get a raise last year, and I, I, I kind of understood that happened before. We were in negotiations with the aides, and so, um, uh, we would hold off on that. But this is now the second year. You've given them more, it's, now they're, now they're dealing with the vendors, and their new purchase order is something they never had to do before, that was taken care of at the ad building. We've given them more responsibility, with that much more responsibility, and even though kids aren't at school, it's still a big job. And yet, there's nothing in this budget that, that, um, is being held as a raise to, to, as a raise for them. None of us would like to be out in the working field and, and not get a raise for two years. That's not fair. And something should have been done about, about that, um, about a raise for that. Personally, I can't support a budget that really, really, um, is offensive to the secretaries in this, in this district. That's just not right. They deserve, they deserved a raise from last year, they deserve, um, one from this year, and if we give them one this year, it should be, it should be retro. But we didn't even put money in the budget to cover that. That's never happened, and that's not right. Uh, Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
No.
Marge Divisat?
No.
Sharon Anderson?
No.
Olivia Pintaro?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
George Cora?
Yes.
Action item B, I'm looking for a motion to approve the, the, that's a shared inspection device from the merch one LLC. To be approved in the amount, the amount of $4,600 for eight devices. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
So a second? I'll second.
I had a question about, you said it for eight devices? Yes. Okay, because I was confused in the wording in this, um, because it mentioned something about they had, was it, that they had 13 different options?
Yes.
Okay. So we're purchasing eight devices?
Correct.
So I'm assuming GW is going to have two devices, so then, and we can.
And then one at the ad building?
I wanted to, okay. And then one at the ad building, or no?
We have that current, uh, donation one that I, um, that was on, because it'll be on the agenda here, but, um, that, that I want to put to the board for, for the ad building. Because there was that one donated, um, to AIDS that I, that I would like to add.
Was that the other company?
Yes. Yes.
So, so what, what, what the, is the eight that you said, is that, is that really enough? Wait, when, if you're going to be taking temperatures at the school, I mean, even a small school like, like homeschool, they're going to have people coming in the front door, parents' room, and the parking lot is at the south end of the building. So I, my concern is, though, I, and I understand GW and Lincoln need, need more, but I'm, I'm also thinking, I, I'd also like to know what the thought process was, we're only getting one, like, for, for Edison and, uh, well, Robinson, they, everybody comes in at one door. But at, at Hostel, they don't, and Home, they don't, and, and Edison, they don't.
You know, and, and basically, it comes down to budget. You know, I, I wish we could have one at every, every entranceway, and then that would be more safe for, you know, all the staff and everybody in halls. It, it, I think, because two is, is going to be a difficult mandate at, at the bigger schools as well. Um, and then, so I agree with you, I don't, I don't disagree, but it basically came down to budgetary costs and then trying to see, you know, what else, how do we anymore care that budget? A second round is going to come, so we're hopeful. But, but basically, we do still have the handheld, you know, i- i- if we find that one or two isn't enough, you know, we'll, we'll have to try to problem solve, but, um, you know.
But are these mostly, are these mostly these devices, are they mostly for the staff? Or are they for anybody coming in the door?
Yeah, anybody coming into the door.
Students?
Yes. And, and the ones we went with this time are not individual walk-up, one at a time. They, they have a range, and they can capture multiple individuals coming in at one time and take three, four, five temperatures at a time. And it keeps a picture, uh, and the, uh, input information so that if, if I'm monitoring and someone gets past, we, we can, we can view it.
I, I guess, I guess I, I'm still, I'm still concerned is that, I would take Edison, for instance, because they have that big parking lot, and people come in that door by the, the library. Students don't come in that door. So if we move the, if you move it to, um, and I, I understand money, I, I get that, but if you move it to a door that's convenient for students, then you have all the students coming in at one time, how are they associated with this, this, this meeting? If, in fact, we go back. So I just, is, is someone going to think about, about that? Because that, then you have teachers walking all the way from East Avenue, all the way around to, say, the front door, whatever door you deem that, okay? Someone's going to look at it. I can see that it's going to make, not make, it's going to make a lot of people very, very, very unhappy. Okay, all right. Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
Marge Divisat?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Pintaro?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
George Cora?
Yes.
Action item C, I'm looking for motion to approve the bid for 36 million including industrial faxing service for the amount of $4,241 per bid. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
So I have a second?
I'll second it. Do you have a second? Do you have a question? I, um, so why do we feel the need? Um, so why do we feel the need, and then explain it to me? You go to the outside service when our nighttime custodians and at least one daytime custodian, probably, I don't know. Are already certified in cleaning and sanitation. Why are we not letting our own staff take care of this when they're more than capable?
No, that's a great question. And, and it's, it's a safeguard in the essence of, you know, if we have to do a whole building and time is of the essence and that type of thing. It, it is, it is something that we wanted to ensure that we have the option of utilizing. You know, if it's one classroom, you know what I mean? That's one thing. But we just, we just had a case where we had to do the whole building. And, 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 and when we do the whole building on top of the other duties, it becomes difficult to balance. And so we wanted to make sure we had that option. And if we need to respond quickly, you know what I mean? And if, if, unfortunately, the last issue we had came on right by a week ago.
Right.
Um, but, but in the event it was the next day. And looking at if we have kids and there's more, more duties for the staff to contribute to currently. You know, and right now we don't have lunch and all those things. So it, it, it's having the flexibility to be able to maneuver in the event the, the numbers stack up and we're not just cleaning one room.
So you're not looking to bring this company in weekly or whatever? You're just, you know, shouldn't you need them in the future? Um, if that's who we're, we're going to go to. Um, my second question is, this is not, neither of these are the company that we used before, correct? Because the company that we used before was Pyramid, right? Or something like that, or Homey or whatever. I can't read the Skylight, EKI, whatever.
Skylight one, I remember just from the last.
So that was the Costello one? Because they weren't interested in.
You know, I, I believe there were minimal bids. Um, I can't recall if they were in. I think they might have been in the bid as well, but.
But that's not who we're going with. Maybe they're just super busy now. I'm sure all these companies are happy.
I had, I had a question. And the, and the motion charges that, uh, $4,241 per visit. But I, and the chart that you sent us, that, that 4,200 was broken down by school. So, um, let's go back and take a look. Do you know what I, you know what I'm talking about? Um.
Do we have to have all of them?
Yes. And that's my, that's my question is if, if you gave us a chart here, and that, you did give us a chart here, of where they broke down, um, cleaning services, okay. Um, they had like, for instance, uh, with, and I, I, I didn't understand. First of all, I, I think I want to know where this company is from. But I didn't understand. They said Crazy Clean, the, the line that does not include cleaning is 3817. And then the line above it, it says where, um, they include cleaning is 4241. Well, how much cleaning are they doing? That's not a lot of money. It seems as though if they're, if they're not doing any cleaning and it's, and it's $3,800 and now they're going to clean, they're going to do cleaning, that's like $400 more. And then they have prices per school, like say Costello is 7885. No, 57885, I need to make this bigger. And then Lincoln is 855. So the motion says 4241 per visit. But if, if, and whoever, I don't know who's going to make that determination. Suppose there's somebody who comes in and is COVID positive and we, whoever that somebody is that determines that, um, GW needs to be, and we go with the cleaning one. That's, um, $1,200. So that doesn't match, that doesn't match the.
Well, then the, the motion.
That doesn't match the motion. Because this, this motion that we're passing says that every time they come out, it's $4,200 per visit. And that is not necessarily true unless they're doing the entire district.
Yeah, maybe we should, I, I did ask, she left, you know, and, and she did say, you know, no, it's just per visit.
Well, I, I don't know how we can vote on that. I really don't. If, and, and on that.
Put it up. Is she here to ask?
You know, what idea she has?
Because why would we, why would we cast somebody that says.
Maybe a winner crisis for, for, for.
Well, you say, uh, well, that's a, that's a, you say, here.
Well, I see the chart.
Not all of the amount of 4,200, some 4,400, 4,200.
But you understand what I'm saying? I mean, it's, it's only $86, $7 to clean and do the administration building. I don't know what the cleaning is, but she was here and she said that the person is on the phone. So would it be okay to report? Yeah.
Hello?
Hello, hello.
Hi, can you hear me?
No, I'm near the white area.
How are you?
Hello?
It's perfect. Hello?
Hi.
There you are. Go ahead.
You know, we're, we're all confused at this point now because of the motion calls for $4,241, per visit for the cleaning and sanitation and disinfecting. But if it's broken down on the chart that was given to us, its prices are, or amounts are different. So how are we calculating that this amount is for school, uh, for the whole district or?
Sheila, this is Marge. My question is, is, is kind of, okay, well, okay. Um, but my question is that the, the most, the motion we're supposed to bid on is for $4,241 per visit. But on the chart, every school has a different amount. And whoever determines in the, in the administration building, whether it's the maintenance director or the superintendent or whoever it is, and they only have to come out for one school, well, that's not 4241. That could be anywhere from $87 up to $1200 and some dollars. Hello?
Well, you're right.
Well, maybe we should just amend it and.
Or. Where's the contract? I think they have to the whole district. What is it?
Yeah, what is the contract? I mean, we didn't get a copy of the contract. So I couldn't look, I couldn't look it up. I'm not, I'm not against cleaning outfit. I'm not, I just am not clear about that.
Terry, can you please unmute your phone so you could, you're able to speak? You, you can hit star six and that will unmute you. We show you as muted. Great. Great. Now can you hear me?
Now we can hear you.
Fantastic. Fantastic. So I just want to confirm and to clarify, um, some, some questions that, that need to be cleared up with respect to the bid process when you're dealing with a sanitation and disinfecting company. So your normal janitorial and cleaning company is doing your standard cleaning. However, any of the companies you choose, whether it's Crazy Clean or any of the other vendors that you're looking at, there is a, there is a, uh, there is a prevention process, a germ prevention process that, that is the theme behind these visits. So there is a, there's an emergency COVID, um, process, right? If there was a, an outbreak at one of the schools, that would then require you to come out to that one particular zone that got infected with the virus, that you were coming out to then clean and sanitize and disinfect and ensure that there was no additional spread. But there is a process that, that you will see in any of the districts that we're currently servicing across the Chicagoland area and up north, where there is a consistent one week, at once a week, twice a week service that is providing the level of prevention that you need when you bring your students fully back to, to school. So I think there's some clarity with respect to what your, what the district needs versus how you're looking at this, at these, um, services. This is not a once a month pop in and disinfect and sanitize your, your building. That is not going to provide you with the sense of comfort that you need to protect your teachers and your students and your faculty. And that's for any service provider. Any service provider that's going to provide you with a once a month sanitation and cleaning is not providing you with what you need in order to prevent the outbreak. And there's, we're, we're, we're currently servicing over 30 doors for schools right now. Through, um, three districts as well as some private and charter schools. And each of them are at least doing twice, twice a week or once a week servicing. So I think that there needs some, needs to be some clarity amongst the board and, and the team with respect to what that looks like. Because I think there's some confusion there. There's a COVID emergency process that is what I think I'm hearing, um, from the members of the board that are speaking, that I think that's what you're, that's what you're thinking this is. And that is not what this, um, is presented on this paper for either of the vendors that I think you're looking at.
But what our concern is, and you know, we're, we're just trying to be on the forefront of these things. But the amount, how is it calculated per visit? Uh, based the provision we have. We understand that we need sanitation at different levels due to the emergency level of it. But what we're having on the table now is the amount of 42, uh, 41 per visit. How is it calculated?
So the, the 4241 per visit is broken down to a per square, I think it's like one cent per square foot of coverage per, um, per building that we would be covering. But again, keep in mind that that is, that is your prevention method that, um, that you're seeing districts do all across, you know, the state. That is a process that allows us to then come in and sanitize and disinfect. And without kind of getting into all of the science behind it, it allows you to eliminate the viral load that are on surfaces that would then be transferred to your students or to your, um, faculty or staff. So there, that is that process, right? And so, um, when you have your cleaning staff then come in, you want to sanitize and disinfect on clean surfaces. So there is a cleaning component that some schools have decided to, uh, which we don't recommend and the CDC doesn't recommend either. They've eliminated that, that janitorial component. Um, and they've added us on because they felt like that was a better position for their district. However, the CDC recommends to have a separate vendor that then comes in after you've done your normal janitorial and cleaning. We're not a janitorial and cleaning service. We are, uh, we are specifically only doing disinfecting and sanitation across the state. So that's what you need to just ensure that you're thinking about as you're thinking about what vendors you choose and what that process looks like for your district.
So this, this, this bid here of 4,200 to 41, whatever it is, that's to have, that's to have your company come in and clean and sanitize every building, every school and the administration building once or twice a week?
Yes.
Where it comes up? We, so we would, you would not be coming out just to do George Washington? If we had a COVID positive person there, that would be what you're saying is emergency, emergency cleaning?
Exactly. So the way, so the way this works is you have a, um, you have a germ prevention process, which is what this recommendation is, which is what all the, the vendors would be recommending, which would include your normal cycle of clean, of sanitizing and disinfecting. So you've got to make sure you're separating the words. It, it lumps into the word cleaning, but it's sanitizing and disinfecting that has taken place after your janitorial system has cleaned, right? You can't sanitize and disinfect on a dirty surface. So that's one. Then you have the additional option when there's an outbreak that you want to be able to have them come in and do a full, which is a more extensive sanitizing and disinfecting service when you had a COVID outbreak. And then in addition to that, what, what you can, um, you know, you can opt for, you determine based on what your return to school program is, what that looks like in order to do the prevention process. So I just, you know, you're not going to, you're not going to tackle this thing by coming in and doing once a month. It would be a total waste of just your, your, the process. Because you're, you can't, you can't come in once a month and do a sanitation and disinfecting and ensure that the, the safety of the people that are going to be in that space. You have to have a process that is combined with, um, a number of different treatments, which is what we were suggesting here. So that's where you're looking at that per school, which is a per price point of, I think it's .0125 cents, uh, per square footage.
So basically this is for that company once a week?
Yeah. That's not what I thought. I thought we were looking, you presented that and we needed them. Yeah.
Yeah. That, that, that's my mistake. I mean, that, that's what I'm curious about is what is the, uh, regularity of it? Currently, I'm, I'm trying to pull up the contract, but I'm.
You, you're, so are you suggesting that a school district, now we don't have students in, we're still remote. So is your suggestion that we have our schools clean and sanitize every week, twice a week?
That is, so, yeah, so what, and, and we can, we can back that with other districts um, that are similar in size to Lyons. But you, you have to, you have to provide that level of sanitation and disinfecting if you want to have an active process in place to prevent the spread. I mean, anytime you bring anyone into a space, you, you have the risk of spreading COVID. But I, but obviously when you have this process in place where you're disinfecting and sanitizing on a regular basis, you prevent the ability for that viral load to be transferred from person to person. And so it, that is the process that, um, you know, it, I would welcome, uh, the opportunity to, to ensure that some of the microbiologists and the, um, scientists that we have that pro, provide our process and, and complete what your process should look like for the school. But you, you absolutely have to have a process in place that includes a more consistent sanitizing and disinfecting routine.
So Terry, on the bid that, that, you know, was put out, it says as needed. So we're under the impression that we can use your company as we need to.
Well, as, as, as needed in, in respect to emergency COVID cleaning, but as recommended, which would be in the full, which you may not be seeing if you're not looking at the full proposal. The full proposal should say as rec, you know, per recommendation or per plan. I mean, every school district is different with respect to how they're, how they're opening. Some schools have just teachers in place. And so the, obviously the, the level of, um, the, the level of frequency doesn't have to be as strong as if you've got students in the school, correct? But those are the things that come up during the initial assessment when you come out and you discuss what your kind of return to school plan is. But, but as, as needed, and, and I apologize if, if that's how it's reading. Um, and as needed would, would definitely not, like, it's not a once a month, every other month type of, um, process is, is when you're trying to tackle this pandemic.
Does, does your company offer, um, um, as needed, um, service for a fee? Are you a company, say we had a breakout, uh, a COVID positive or whatever, one of our schools? Are, do you offer that aside from what you're showing us now, you know?
Oh, ab- absolutely. There, there's definitely, we have, I mean, we, 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 we respond to COVID, um, emergency cases. You know, our, our, our benchmark is within 24 hours. If we're in a contract, it's within 18 hours. So we absolutely do that. I'm, I'm just explaining to you from the perspective of what we've seen school districts do. If you've got a return to school plan, and maybe you're not there yet. But if you've got a return to school plan, you want to have a more, um, thorough plan with respect to how you tackle it. And, and doing it on a case by case basis when you have an outbreak is, is not going to be beneficial for, um, the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. I'm going to go back on mute.
Okay. So, uh, we had.
What does the contract say? What are we saying?
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to do something, booting the query and, uh, I'm going to try to table it.
Yeah, yeah. I was just, we need to find out more information and, and discuss it and, and, yeah.
Obviously yours was not communicating with someone.
And can you, in the bid, if you look at that packet, it does say on an as needed basis. So that is how they, you know, pay them. So I think there's a lot of confusion.
Okay. So we had a motion on the table. So we'll, uh. Okay, so we had a motion on the table, so we'll, uh, we have a first or second, and?
We didn't. We put it on the table.
And then, oh, oh, we got COVID, what we had on the table, so we don't, um, um-
Can she just withdraw her motion? Can she just withdraw her motion?
With, with a, with a, with a, with a break?
Okay, I will withdraw my motion.
How?
You were the second, correct?
No, no, I, we don't do it.
We, we, we don't withdraw the motion, did we?
Well, tell me the maker of the motion.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So I'm looking for a motion to say we'll be item D. Well, uh, please, the general, for that.
Until you get more information or until it's?
To get clear, yeah, to make sure what we're looking at as far as charges and the services. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Now, second.
Hold on.
Okay, Marjouba Saq?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Pintaro?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
George Flores?
Yes. Well, um, action item D. I'm looking for a motion to approve the contract with Midwest Direct Student Service for the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars to be provided for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second?
I, I have a que- I have a question. Now, um, and, and I think this is a choice, I think it's a good move. But now she gets, um, quite a, an increase in pay and a job warranty. I'm, I'm not minimizing that. But my concern is now, she's gonna have to sign another contract, I'm thinking. I wanna make sure that, and, and we said that we're gonna do it, but sometimes things get forgotten. I would like to make sure that she has that same clause in her contract that Dr. Baker does, that if she decides to leave us, does it, if, you know, some people, the ones that left us, we'd have any control over. And we said for Baker going forward.
We did, uh, those ones, we did look at.
Did you go back, okay, I, I was under the impression that you did.
Yeah, with all the renew, Mark, that can, uh, want to go.
Well, but I mean, people like, like, Kelly, they, they signed their contract before Baker.
But they renewed the next one. They, this was the beginning of the next contract, and we changed all of them at that point.
Okay, so we're not looking to the two-year one? Okay, they were, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure. And then, will you be, will you be posting for her job, the, the preschool director then?
Again, at this point, that, that, that's what I was planning on. I wanna look at that, and I did wanna talk to, talk to her about, uh, you know, what dynamic was that as well.
That, that was my only question, was that vacation clause, I don't wanna get involved in that again.
True. Hold on.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Pintaro?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
Marjouba Saq?
Yes.
George Flores?
Yes. Special counsel. Action item, action item D. Looking for, uh, for a motion to approve the contract between the Board of Education of Lions, who leaves their daughter's dream in their full-time age of visitor one of three from July first, twenty nineteen to June thirty, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Olivia? I just have a question, this, this means, now, I know, I know it goes back to last year, but they're gonna get a raise for last year's pay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it'll be like retro that, okay.
You know, the, our goal is to win.
Okay. Okay.
And now that this is done, are we gonna start on the custodians?
We've already begun.
Okay, oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know that either.
Oh. Well, that's fine.
Olivia Pintaro?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
Marjouba Saq?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
George Flores?
Yes.
Okay, can I ask, was on the, 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 the negotiation committee for the custodians?
Yes, um, the custodians and Winifred Rodriguez.
Weren't they on for eight? You, you didn't make a change for custodians? I'm, I'm just, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Moving on with action item F. I'm looking for a motion to approve that memorandum of understanding between Lion Visor One and Four Point Eight of Visor One Three to provide verification of newly added contract language regarding special education incentive and function of age in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-two contract. Do I have a motion?
I will make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second?
Olivia Pintaro?
Yes.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
Marjouba Saq?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
George Flores?
Yes. Motion, counsel. Moving on with action item G. Looking for a motion to approve Johnson Controls Change Order for an additional fifty thousand dollars to repair the existing wiring conditions at Lincoln School. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Uh, second.
Vito Campanelli?
Yes.
Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
Marjouba Saq?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Pintaro?
Yes.
George Flores?
Yes. Motion, counsel. Looking for a motion for adjourned at eight thirty?
Before, we can, Jerry, can I ask, ask a question here? Um, when, when we go over, I'm at a conversation with Felicia, um, today, and I'd like an agenda item added for next, our next meeting at the end of October to, um, to vote on adding, um, the statements that were, um, just arbitrarily edited out of the minutes and to be attached as, um, and I'm speaker minded, Sharon, Shannon, if she, she wants to, that they be added as, what did you call, exhibits, or?
What you could do, what you could do is like an action item, make your motion to amend that to, to this statement, or attachment of it.
Okay, even though they voted it down one time, I can do it again?
Because what you'd be doing is asking for the amendment, okay, there's like, yeah, you know, you know, I have this put on the next month meeting, where you're like, anything you can do with that, an amendment is included, or attachment of it.
Okay, but I'd like, I'd like to do that, because I just talked to I A S D, and no one has the right to, to edit those. Um, that's a decision that's, that's made, we have somebody we pay to take the minutes, and that is not part of any verbatim kind of thing. That was an attachment that was allowed in the meeting before, it was not allowed. So I'm asking Shannon, do you wanna be included on that? She does, so could, when they're putting the agenda together, could you do that? So it's a motion to amend the minutes to approve the statement.
So is this a statement, certified or amended, or as they, as, uh, I mean, to, to be aligned with that?
Yeah, I would do that.
Okay. Very, very.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? This is my question, not my- Okay, I'm making sure you weren't-
No.
Okay.
Winifred, okay, so what time were you, what time you calling, eight thirty?
It was at thirty, but now it's eight thirty-two.
Eight thirty, wait, eight thirty-two? Okay, I get the follow-up. Um, Winifred Rodriguez?
Yes.
Shannon Johnson?
Yes.
Marjouba Saq?
Yes.
Sharon Anderson?
Yes.
Olivia Pintaro?